Let's go ahead and get seated. We'll start with the special town meeting. Tonight's meeting is going to start with a special town meeting. The special town meeting of the town of the city of Peoria is called to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer, silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So like I previously said, tonight, we're starting out with a special town meeting. Anyone wishing to make motions and vote at the special town meeting must be a township elector. A elector is defined under the law as a person registered to vote within the township no less than 28 days before the date of the special town meeting. Please note that the township boundaries differ from the city of Peoria. If you wish to vote at the special town meeting, you must have checked at the table outside council chambers. The first order of business is the election of a moderator. Nominations are open for the position of moderator. Great. Thank you. Do I have a second? And anybody can make a second. Is there a second in the audience? Can I have your name, please? So we have a motion and a second to nominate Dr. Rita Aliyah's moderator. Are there any more nominations from the floor? Any more nominations from the floor? Seeing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Dr. Rita Aliyah's moderator, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Dr. Rita Aliyah is elected moderator by majority vote. Please rise to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear to perform the position of moderator of the special town meeting faithfully and impartially as required by law?
I do.
Great, thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk? We are on to item number four. Item number four is to consider, discuss, and vote to authorize entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Peoria to lease space at 427 West Main, Peoria, Illinois.
I need a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
We need a motion?
Trustee Kelly? Oh, sorry about that. There we go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move to approve, but I would like to have a comment.
Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Allen. Discussion, trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The intergovernmental agreement is with the city of Peoria and what other government?
Is your mic on supervisor?
I'm sorry. It's, I suppose it's the township. So the township and the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Councilwoman Velpula, did you have your light on on purpose? Okay, alright. Thank you. Any discussion? Supervisor Larry? Is your mic on?
It is now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. The reason for this meeting this evening is we are seeking for approval to lease the unused portion of our building. Many of you may know that the township is at the new location, which is kind of, kind of a relative term now. We've been operating out of half of the, the building. Over the course of the last few years, I've been working diligently to get that space to where it is a usable space. And now this evening, what we bring to the electors to provide their insight, their approval to lease the property. The anticipated tenant that we are looking forward to utilizing that space, I think will be a great fit for the township, and not only that, a win-win for the community. And so with that being said, I don't know if the chief of police would like to add a few comments in the anticipated tenant that we are looking to collaborate with, partner with, and to utilize the other portion of the building to, to provide services and the social services unit for the community.
Good evening trustees. I apologize for my voice under the weather today. We're excited for this partnership. Several months ago, I think it's several months ago now, councilwoman Gordon Young had an event where gowns for prom were being given away at this location, and we ended up going over there, my family and I. And when I saw the space, I said, how come nobody told me about this space? We were in the middle of trying to negotiate a different location. It wasn't really following through. We were running into some hiccups, and when we saw this spot, I said, this is the perfect place. It's by the township. It's in a central location. It's in a neutral location. It's going to be a great spot where we'll help bring a little bit more life to, if you will, more presence on the police side and our social services unit. We have a director and we have one licensed clinical social worker. We're in the process of hiring the data analyst and the admin assistant. Furniture has been delivered, and so we're very excited to be there. We'll be in close proximity to Carl, who is our direct partner, and where the director and the licensed clinical social workers are employed from, if you will. So it's very exciting for us to really be able to house them somewhere in such close proximity to the station, but away from the station, but in close proximity to Carl and in this central location, where we can bring some more resources to that area and some space that other community members and organizations will be able to use as well.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to applaud the leadership of our Madam Supervisor, Latrina Leary. One, getting that space operational. I've toured it multiple times. It's a beautiful space. And then two, the collaboration between you, the Peoria Police Department, and Carl Health, I think is a beautiful illustration of just how we work together in this community. So again, thank you so much for your leadership and making sure that that space was operational. You stayed ready, so you didn't have to get ready, and now you have a great opportunity to utilize it. So just want to commend you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Gordon Young?
I echo these. Thank you, Chairman, Trustee, Chairman, Chairwoman. I echo the sentiments that have been shared, and as one who is such a passionate advocate for the field of mental health, I'm going to waive the finder's fee here. No, I just, you know, it's a beautiful thing when it comes together, and having been there and seeing this. But then just the invitation, opening up the house to say, come in and see what we're doing, and to have the foresight. It was your idea to say, what about this space? And when you invite people in, like those ideas, just, I mean, you could see the light bulb go off when the chief was there, like wow. Definitely a centralized location, definitely a welcoming location, and one that is certainly needed in this community. So I applaud the efforts of both parties here and everyone that's going to benefit. Thank you.
And this, this space will be available to you as well for those proms next year.
Alright, I'll take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any of the electors? Okay, with that, all those who are in favor of entering into an intergovernment agreement with the city of Peoria to lease space at 427 West Main Street, Peoria, Illinois, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we move on to citizens' opportunity to address the electors.
Are there any citizens to address the electors? Illinois law does not allow any further items to be considered on tonight's agenda, as the agenda must be established in advance of tonight's meeting. However, if anyone wishes to address the electors tonight, you are allowed to do so at this time, consistent with our rules of order, which is three minutes. Again, are there any citizens who would like to address the electors? Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are at adjournment.
I need a motion to adjourn and a second. Moved by trustee Allen, seconded by trustee Gordon Young. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no, nay. Our meeting is adjourned. We're going to move right into our city council meeting, so again, good evening, everyone. It is 6:13 PM on Tuesday, June the 11th, 2024. And I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience on WCBU. Like to welcome our audience watching on channel, cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali, councilmember Allen, councilmember Seer, councilmember Gordon Young, councilmember Graham, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Kelly, councilmember Euler, councilmember Regenbach, councilmember Velpula, and councilmember Vespa. We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, everyone, please join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have several proclamations. Tonight, I'm going to ask for some help. I didn't get around in time. But councilwoman Allen, if you could help with the second one, and councilwoman Gordon Young with the third. Our first proclamation recognizes Pride Month issued by the city of Peoria. We have Cassie Lucchese, president of Peoria Pride. Proclamation reads, whereas the city of Peoria celebrates diversity and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our community. And whereas on June 28th, 1969, the riots at the Stonewell Inn in New York City are acknowledged as the beginning of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus rights movement. During Pride Month, we remember the events of June 1969 and celebrate the honor of our LGBTQ plus neighbors, friends, and family. And whereas LGBTQ plus individuals have made immeasurable impacts to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas celebrating Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the city of Peoria's LGBTQ plus community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. The city of Peoria supports the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. Now therefore I, Rita Aliyah, mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge the month of June as Pride Month in Peoria.
Thank you, Mayor Aliyah and councilmembers. I won't take much of your time. It is a comfort to know that as LGBTQ plus community in central Illinois, that we are accepted and affirmed by the city of Peoria, because it's not always a given. I'd like to take the opportunity to invite all of you to join us at the Sixth Annual River City Pride Festival, happening on July 20th, from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. on the riverfront. Your presence there will further show this community just how accepted and affirmed and supported we truly are in the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Our second proclamation, whereback councilman Allen recognizes Juneteenth, issued by the city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Juneteenth, also known called Emancipation Day and Freedom Day, commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States. It is observed annually on June 19th. And whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to end slavery in the United States. And whereas more than two years passed before the news reached the enslaved black people in Texas, on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his soldiers arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas Juneteenth is a day for all of us to reflect on what has happened since 1865 and to celebrate the social, economic, and cultural contributions of African Americans in the United States. And whereas on June 16th, 2021, Governor J.B. Prisker signed House Bill 3992 naming Juneteenth as National Freedom Day and designated it as a state holiday. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed legislation into law establishing June 19th as Juneteenth National Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, the city of Peoria stands in solidarity with our African American community and will encourage the public to attend many of the celebrations on this day. Now therefore I, Rita Aliyah, mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge and celebrate June 19th as Juneteenth in Peoria, Illinois, dated this day, the 11th day of June 2024 AD.
Thank you. Our next proclamation will be read by councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young. It is recognizing migraine and headache awareness, excuse me, awareness month. We have Alicia Friedman, the Director of ARMS CMA Incorporated and Shades for Migraine Community Leader. Ms. Friedman, thank you for being here. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas there are more than 300 medically recognized headache diseases, including cluster headaches and migraine, headache diseases impact one in six households in the United States, and more than 40 million Americans live with headache diseases, including approximately four million who experience chronic migraine. And whereas headache diseases are three to four times more prevalent in women, Native indigenous communities have the highest prevalence of disabling headaches in the United States. And there are significant disparities in diagnosis, treatment, and outcome for Black, Hispanic, and Native indigenous populations suffering from headache diseases. And whereas it's estimated that 40 to 50% of those living with migraine disease are undiagnosed. Migraine is the second leading cause of global disability and one of the most disabling for women under the age of 50. And whereas the effects of headache diseases are experienced on a spectrum, presenting significantly different levels of intensity, frequency, and disability. Stigma and misinformation related to headache disease have stifled research and advances in treatment. All people living with headache diseases deserve fair, equal, timely, and affordable access to new and innovative treatments to live their lives to their fullest potential. Now therefore, I, Rita Aliyah, mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge the month of June as migraine and headache awareness month in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of June 2024 AD.
Thank you, Mayor Aliyah and the city council for this proclamation. As stated, migraine is the second leading cause of global disability, with 40 million Americans alone living with this chronic neurological condition. Proclamations such as this help bring awareness to and reduce the stigma associated with this chronic neurological disease for all of those Americans and those globally, like me, who live with this devastating condition. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. Our next proclamation will be read by councilmember Kelly. It recognizes the 125th anniversary of the Knights of Columbus. And we have Doug Buher and Louis Konowski. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas in 1882, blessed Michael J. McGivney founded the Order of the Knights of Columbus with his hope that Catholic laymen would come together in a common cause to strengthen the church, promote and protect Catholic family life, and to offer aid to the less fortunate. And whereas in 2022, the Illinois State Council Knights of Columbus celebrated the 125th anniversary of the first council in the state of Illinois, acknowledging those 125 years as a magnificent milestone in the fraternal life of every council that reaches that point. And whereas Spalding Council Number 427 in Peoria, chartered on May 21st, 1899, will celebrate its 125th anniversary in this fraternal year, ending June 30th, 2024, and will continue forth in a new century of service to faith, family, community, and life, while continuing to honor God and country. And whereas the delegates of the Illinois State Council Knights of Columbus recognized Spalding Council Number 427's contributions and legacy to the Order with a resounding cheer and standing ovation at the 126th Illinois State Council Meeting in April 2024, now therefore I, Rita Aliyah, mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the 125th anniversary of the Knights of Columbus in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of June 2024 AD.
Thank you, Councilman Worthy Grand Knight, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and city manager, for your time. Thank you for recognizing the Knights of Columbus as we celebrate 125 years as a council. We were founded on the principles of charity, unity, and fraternity. The Knights of Columbus was established in 1882 by Michael, Father Michael J. McGivney in New Haven, Connecticut, and a small group of parish parishioners. Their mission was to bring financial aid and assistance to the sick, disabled, and needy members and their families. Today, Father McGivney is being considered for sainthood. The Knights of Columbus supports intellectual disabilities through Tootsie Roll drives, Coats for Kids, seminary and support, and Women's Care Center, just to name a few. The growth of the Order has grown from 50,000 members in 1899 to over 2.1 million worldwide. Currently located on Radnor Road, we serve dinners on Tuesday and Friday, and you're all welcome anytime. Thank you for allowing me the time to convey how our organization contributes to our community and our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final proclamation recognizes the Ernestine Jackson Freedom Day Parade. We have representing the Sherri, Ms. Sherri Carter Allen, the NAACP Peoria Branch First Vice President, and Mr. Dell Jackson, who is the son of Mrs. Ernestine Jackson. This is pretty special to me, because Mrs. Jackson was a mentor to me for many, many years. The proclamation reads, whereas it's fitting that in the same month we celebrate Juneteenth, we also celebrate the birth of Ernestine Jackson, who came into this world on June 23rd, 1940. And whereas Juneteenth symbolizes the official end of slavery, on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, 250,000 enslaved people were finally notified they were free, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation and just about two months after the Confederate surrender. And whereas the true spirit of Juneteenth is the freedom seekers, the freedom fighters, the freedom planners, and the freedom builders, who didn't let the hope, the struggle, or the joy of that day disappear. They carried it from city to city and spread it through marches and movements, through the NAACP, through Freedom Summers and Poor People's Campaigns. Whereas Ernestine Jackson carried the freedom spirit of Juneteenth, dedicated to opening opportunities for better jobs, housing, and education, passionate about voting and voting rights, and an expert on issues of affirmative action and equal opportunity. Jackson was the city of Peoria's first director of fair employment and housing. She served in similar roles in champagne and Bloom She served in similar roles in Champaign and Bloomington. She worked to expand equal opportunity throughout central Illinois for more than fifty years, even at the age of seventy-five, when she was elected to the Board of Education for Peoria Public Schools. And whereas it is no accident that she, like her husband, Attorney Don Jackson, would serve the state conference and the local branch of the NAACP for decades. Still, she always found time for joy in the struggle, joy in her family, and the Colored Ladies Book Club, and of course, singing with the Heritage Ensemble. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge the work of the NAACP Peoria Branch in its efforts to acknowledge the legacy of Mrs. Jackson with the installation of the Ernestine Jackson Juneteenth Freedom Day Parade in Peoria, Illinois.
Madam Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Jackson family, I'd like to say thank you very much. It catches you up a little bit when you hear all your mom has done over the years. But when you think about all she's done for people today, way back then, the housing and the jobs and the opportunities that her and my father both worked hard for, it's amazing to see what's happening in our city today. I want to thank you very much again for the, it's just awesome, recognition for a mother, and the NAACP for bringing this to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
To our illustrious Madam Mayor, the Honorable Dr. Rita Ali, and our esteemed City Council Members, it is with great honor that we accept this proclamation on behalf of our President, the Reverend Marvin Hightower, the Executive Board, and members of the NAACP Peoria Branch. How befitting it is to receive such an honor in this time and space, in this great edifice, where our dear sister, the late Ernestine Jackson, walked these very halls, the people's halls. Throughout her career in three different municipalities, she fought diligently and tirelessly for civil rights, workers' rights, women's rights, and equal employment opportunities across the entire workforce spectrum. Let the archives of the City of Peoria reflect that on Saturday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at eleven o'clock a.m., the Ernestine Jackson Juneteenth Freedom Day Parade with over fifty units will uniquely and proudly commemorate Juneteenth and celebrate our ancestral gift, the God-given gift of freedom. Thank you, and may God bless you all.
Thank you.
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Ringenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, as printed.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town board item. Twenty-four dash one fifty-four is a request from the town officials to approve the May two thousand twenty-four actual expenditures and to approve the June two thousand twenty-four anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Grayup?
Unless there are any questions from the trustees, I would move to approve as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to the city portion of the agenda. We're at the consent agenda. Twenty-four dash one fifty-five is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve the low bid of Stark Excavating in the amount of eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars and award a contract for the MacArthur Highway Reconstruction Project with an additional authorization of eighty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for contingencies for a total contract award of eight-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Twenty-four dash one fifty-six is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of C and G Concrete Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of three-hundred-and-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and award a contract for the drainage improvements for Donald Street from North Valley Avenue to North Mackin Avenue with an additional authorization of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars for contingencies for a total contract award of three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Twenty-four dash one fifty-seven is a communication with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon, Inc., in the amount of three-hundred-and-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and award a contract for the Ronald Road Drainage Improvements with an additional authorization of thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars for contingencies for a total contract award of three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Twenty-four dash one fifty-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to approve a resolution regarding the approval of closed session minutes. And twenty-four dash one fifty-nine is a receive and file the appointment of a deputy local liquor commissioner, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilwoman Bernice Gordon Young. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. Twenty-four dash one six zero is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-seven, Article twelve, Section two sixty-seven of the Code of the City of Peoria to revise the motor fuel code violation penalties.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If the Council is not aware, we've been struggling with certain receivables from a group of commonly-operated gas stations. And in dealing with and being concerned about the aftermath of the insolvency or sale of those operations, we felt that some strengthening of the penalty provisions for the gas motor fuel tax license would be in order. There's essentially two components. One is if a motor fuel tax operator, if they don't timely pay their fees and license, not only license fees but also taxes due to the city, we can revoke their license. If the license is revoked, that revocation will affect that operator's ability to operate gas stations within the City of Peoria for four years. Along with that, there's an opportunity to adopt a penalty provision that would affect the site. We find that some of these operations, the owners of the site might benefit by a transition where there's an insolvent gas station, and then the operations just shift to a related or semi-related entity for new operations and walk away from their obligations from the city. In order to encourage the owners of these facilities to stand with the city and make sure that the operators are responsible, if a operator license is revoked, that site could be prevented from having another gas station operated on it for one year. At the time of revocation, we can determine whether that element of the penalty will apply or not. Staff feels that these strengthening items, and in particular, I feel that strengthening this ordinance in this way will do away with a lot of the delayed payments that we've seen, and will encourage the owners of these facilities as well as the operators to ensure that the fees and taxes due are paid in a timely fashion. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them, and we'll be putting this up for passage at the next City Council Meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, did you have any additional comments on that?
No, Madam Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with Corporation Council Hayes.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion questions? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Continued discussion? Councilmember Grayup?
Yes, Manager Yurik and Corporation Council Hayes, this is very much overdue. Unfortunately, we have too many businesses that are not concerned about Peoria. They don't have any loyalty to Peoria or to the neighborhoods in which they operate, and they cause no shortage of problems for our community. This is a huge step forward, but again, I want to underscore this, and I know everybody on the Council would agree, that we are not interested in hurting in any way, shape, or form good faith property owners. Most of people who run businesses in Peoria do it with probity, and they do it with integrity. And this is just to help target, because they apparently want attention, they want attention, those people who will not run a business that is positive for this community. So this is well overdue, and I thank our staff for bringing it forward.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at presentations. Twenty-four dash one sixty-one is a communication from the City Manager with a request to receive and file a presentation of the two thousand twenty-three annual report from the co-chairs of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us this evening our two co-chairs of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity, and that is Mary Peterson and Tim Burchi. And the two thousand twenty-three annual report has been prepared, and we wanted to turn the floor over to them for a brief presentation on the actions and activities that the Commission has taken over the past year.
That's great. Does everyone have a copy of that, all the council members?
We will make sure that we get those and get those distributed this evening to you.
Okay. Thank you, and welcome, Tim and Mary. We appreciate your leadership. It's been, I think, three years now, and you've stuck with it, so we just really appreciate you and look forward to what you have to say tonight. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Mayor Ali. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, City Manager, you for putting us on the agenda. You will receive our two thousand twenty-three report coming up, but we just want to highlight some items in here, things that we have done over the course of this last year since our two thousand twenty-two report. As you know, the Joint Commission was launched in two thousand twenty-one to address racial issues and inequities in our community. The structure of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity is a steering committee, and then there are eight working subgroups that we will talk about tonight and what they've been doing. That's economic child and youth development, economic development and jobs, environment and climate, health and human services, housing, quality housing, information and technology, justice system, transportation and mobility. We went about with this charge, we put together a work plan that is four parts, and I just want to briefly talk about that. The first charge was to identify factual evidence of the existence or nonexistence of racial disparities in our community and to create a baseline, and we did that in our two thousand twenty-two report. Then next, to develop high-level strategies to address these disparities, and implement the strategies, and monitor and adjust our strategies as we move ahead. Our work was to be collaborative and not competitive with other groups. Our two thousand twenty-two report was our baseline. With that, overwhelmingly, we did find disparities here in the city and in the county. Some of the areas, life expectancy, income and employment, housing, vehicle ownership, educational attainment, involvement with the justice system, access to technology, and proximity to environmental risk. The data was collected from reliable sources, such as the census, the EPA report, and the report cards on education. The two thousand twenty-three report...
Our two thousand twenty-three report doesn't rehash all the findings that we made in the two thousand twenty-two report. Instead, what it addresses is the way that we've begun to address this. It addresses causes, not symptoms. We're talking about, on a high-level basis, what our strategies are that we're going to begin to implement in each of these areas, and talks about also some housekeeping matters in the way that we're going about our business. I'm going to talk about, first of all, what the steering committee is doing, and then Mary and I are going to walk through each of our groups and talk about what each of them is doing briefly. And then I want to conclude our comments, and we are open for questions, too, conclude our comments with talking about something that I think is incredibly important, and that is making sure that what we're doing ties in exactly with your goals as expressed through your long-range plan, because we see that we are working as a commission of the city and the county, and we need to make sure that what we are doing is in line with what you're doing. So for the steering committee this year, what we continue to do is to work with our work groups to develop strong strategies that they will then implement. We reviewed proposed strategies and presented approved strategies to the county and city, and worked with the city and county governments to build our relationship. I want to thank Patrick in particular, Patrick Yurik, and also County Administrator Sorrell for their work there. We conducted community forums to obtain qualitative data from the entire county. We did so far in this year, two community forums. We have a third one planned for the August-September timeframe. We strengthened our work groups in efforts to recruit and train new members of leadership, and I'm pleased to report that each month we have people still coming to us wanting to join our commission. Obviously, we have people that roll off, but we have a strong cadre of people who join us on a monthly basis. We've established a transition plan for churning out commissioners and selecting replacements, and we're building out our communication plan. And as I said, true progress is being made by each of these groups. Our steering committee worked on charter revisions this past year to create a more efficient operational structure. You approved that earlier this year. We created liaison positions with each of our work groups, both from the steering committee and from the county and city governments to each of our committees. We have an onboarding procedure that we created this past year for new members. We had a second annual meeting, which was conducted at the Civic Center. I already mentioned the community engagement forums. And we continue to work on each of these areas as a steering committee. Now, let me begin talking about what each of our groups is doing. Let me start with economic development and jobs. In the past year, what they worked on was creating a pilot program to provide transitional financial support for transportation needs for selected graduates of ICC's Workforce Equity Initiative Program. What we found was that one of the causes, root causes, of the inability of the underserved portions of our, excuse me, the underserved members of our community was their inability to obtain transportation, reliable transportation, to get them to and from jobs, and it created a real impediment to that. And so this group came up with an innovative program, working with the City of Peoria, which provides, as I said, transitional financial support for transportation needs. They're in process of selecting right now the people to participate in that program, and will be implementing it in the immediate future. They also began surveying minority business groups on growth challenges that they faced within the community. This coming year, they'll be implementing with the city the pilot transportation project, providing feedback on how that works through data... data analysis to the city. They're going to look at a childcare program, which is also another impediment and cause that people have for not being able to obtain and retain jobs, and continue to evaluate barriers to minority business growth.
Environment and climate. In 2023, the environment and climate work group looked at the CO2 pipeline and what that impact would have on a community that was already impoverished as well as had other economic issues going on. They proposed a moratorium on the CO2 pipeline. That has not until that new federal government regulations could be put forth. That was a recommendation that they made to the steering committee that we made to the city, although we do know that that was put on hold, but that was one of their recommendations in looking at how does environment and climate impact on racial. This year, they worked with the city, the Distillery Tiff District, they worked with the city to implement language that would ensure that a racial lens would be put over any efforts that would be made by Distillery Tiff's monies. They're going to be working on asthma, lead, brownfield issues, and especially those that are tied to, and then working with other work groups.
The third work group that I'd like to address is Health and Human Services. In our report from 2022, what we showed that there were really striking disparities in health statistics between our white population and our black population. And one of the reasons for this, or one of the reasons that we believe that this exists, is a lack of a health equity focus that's taken place over a large number of years. And so, what our Health and Human Services Group looked at is that, is there a way to build a health equity lens into decision-making in the health areas in our community, in the health establishments in our community? And so, they began to work, for example, with the Partnership for a Healthy Community at the tri-county area, to look at whether they could integrate themselves within the Health Equity Committee within that group. That group, as you know, develops the CHINA program and the CHIP program for our community. In 2024, that process is beginning again, the CHINA-CHIP process is beginning again, and the Health and Human Services Committee again is working with them to make sure that a health equity lens is built in to that process, which will develop health strategies for the tri-county area.
Information and technology. We've had a lot of discussion about broadband and the ability for individuals to have access to the internet as well as equipment. In this day and age, we all know that if you do not have access to the internet, then you do not have access to the outside of your home. The information and technology group attended many of the broadband equity access and deployment programs to find out what was happening across the state as well as across the country to address these issues that was highlighted during the pandemic. They proposed free Wi-Fi for the Riverfront Park, and they have also drafted a digital equity statement of rights that we should all have access to, equal access to broadband. In 2024, they worked with the county and they have obtained a grant where we'll have worked with providers to find out what can we do in the city of Peoria to remove some of those barriers for individuals who cannot afford the access to high broadband.
Next is the justice system, the fifth of the eight subcommittees that are work groups, as we call them, that fall under the agents of the Racial Justice and Equity Commission. When you think about justice and how this applies to the field that we're talking about, there's any number of avenues that could be taken. This group decided to look at the issue of child violence, which I know many people in this community are looking at, many people are concerned about. In the past year, they've worked on looking at what is it in our community? Where are there gaps that we need to address? Now, of course, in an issue like child violence, you can look at deterrence, you can look at how to prevent violence once it's commencing, kind of like a cure violence type approach. But this group, what it examined was what research had been done through other communities and at the national government level about the root causes of child violence, and paid special attention to the Office of Surgeon General and the work that it had done in looking at child violence as an epidemiological issue. That is to say, that it has an epidemic-type sense to it that needs to be addressed in that fashion. And utilizing the work that's been done by the federal government, began an approach to see what was being done in this community that lined up with the proposals that the federal government had been made to address child violence. We hope that that study and plan that that study will be done by the early fall, and obviously, all of you will receive a copy of that. But again, it will look at where we have gaps in our community in addressing child violence issues. A second project that they're looking at, that the Justice Committee is looking at, is revitalizing the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. Some of you may be familiar with that. It's a vehicle created by Illinois statute that allows counties to create a body that brings together people who are involved in juvenile justice to begin doing planning efforts. That existed in our community pre-COVID and during the COVID time period somewhat ended. Not really somewhat ended, actually ended. And so, there's an effort underway, of which the RJE is a part, to revitalize the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Councils within our community. We plan to make a recommendation, which will come to this body, I think, next month. You'll be hearing more about that. And then there's a third project that we're working on that is of great significance. I don't want to really talk about it tonight because it's still in the planning stages, but let me say that I suspect that you'll be hearing about that project within the next 60 days.
Child and youth development. And as you, these may be out of order just a little bit from what the book is, so if you're following along. Child and youth development, in the 2023, the group looked at the school readiness, preparedness, and the advancement of students as they leave kindergarten, pre-K to kindergarten, and we talked about third grade, the disparities there, eighth grade, and then the graduation rate. We talked about that in our 22 report. This group wanted to look at, after much research, discussion, they have decided to look at kindergarten readiness. And we all, the mayor, the governor just passed quite a bit of legislation and monies to look to make sure that we have kindergarten readiness programs across the state of Illinois. So, they are going to work with the Peoria Public Schools as well as other districts outside of Dunlap and some of the others to find out what they are doing for kindergarten readiness. That is a very, very important stage. When you talk about kindergarten readiness, you're talking about a child being prepared to enter into the classroom, their cognitive skills, their reading, their ability to be ready to learn. And so, they will work with those different groups and entities to see what they're doing to make recommendations for some various things for us to do here in Peoria to reduce that disparity. Housing. I always say, quality housing. When we talked about this work group, it was about housing. We know and understand that people live in houses, but the question sometimes and oftentimes, is it quality housing? And everyone does not, it is not across the board that people have quality housing. They may have a roof over their head, but it may be leaking. They may have a bathroom but not have water, running water. So, again, quality housing. With the quality housing, we've had some start and stops because we've had some changes in leadership, but they've worked with some different organizations recently here to look at what are the challenges to quality housing here in Peoria. They've met with the Peoria Housing Authority, they've met with Dream Center as well as Phoenix Development to talk about what and why are individuals not being able to have access to quality housing. They've used some of the forums that Tim talked about earlier to do a survey from the individuals who are in there to get input, because oftentimes, when we know that if it's not our own personal experience, then we're not quite sure why people are not. We're saying, well, why can't they? There are various reasons and issues why they can't obtain quality housing. And we'll talk a little bit more about how so many of these work groups and what they're doing, how, when one is not working, how it impacts the other. And when we talk about quality housing, why can't they afford? Oftentimes, it's about income. And when you can't afford quality housing and you're not getting a good night's sleep, or if you're not housed, if you're an unhoused individual, and as we call couch hopping, that has a major impact and barrier on oftentimes, youth individuals be able to go to school and to be ready to learn and to obtain the education that they need. So, in 2024, they will continue to have listening forums, doing surveys, and working with the various other groups who are working on housing here in the Peoria and Peoria County to put forth a plan and how we will address quality housing in Peoria and the county of Peoria. Transportation and mobility is our last work group, and transportation and mobility worked with the local, regional, and national studies on transportation barriers and assisted in developing recommendations. We've had the tri-county planning, regional planning committee, we've had quite a few listening sessions in terms of individuals, in terms of transportation, their transportation or lack of. One of the things we talked about with the environment, economic development, and jobs was a pilot program for those individuals who have completed their certifications but are not able to, many of the outlined living wage positions, they're outside of Peoria, and so, their inability to have access to that employment that will help project, move their lives forward. So, one of the challenges is leadership. So, we're working on some of our work groups. We need to appoint new leadership. So, we're working on that. But one of the things that has happened, and Tim mentioned it, but I think it's very important that we mention it again, is now we will have staff, individuals from the city and the county, who will be liaisons to those work groups. And we think that with that in place, it will help move them forward because they will have access to individuals who do this every day, who are working in these arenas every day as a part of what they do. And so, they will be able to help them as it relates to gathering data, knowing what's going on in the city and the county, getting access to other entities outside of Peoria and Peoria County to find out what those bodies are doing as well. So, now we want to wrap this up and just kind of talk a little bit about what we've done in 2023. It's been a good year. We named off a number of initiatives to help move this, the agenda forward. And so, with that, we just kind of want to restate it again that much work has been done and progress has been made in many areas. The groundwork has been laid for progress. Progress should not just be, it should be measured about the movement toward the goals and not just when we get to the goals. That is important that we do that. Strengths has been, this is an enormous issue, and that we have, as a city and a county, have said that we are taking up the charge to make this a better city and a better county for all of our residents. The desire for the community to progress and make change, those are some of our strengths. Keeping in mind that this whole commission is volunteers and that people have, many of the commissioners have been on the commission since the inception, three years ago almost, and that they're committed to stay that long, they are committed. The support that we have received from the city and county, I'm not quite sure that there's been a time that we've asked for some assistance and not received it, so we're very thankful for that. Some of the challenges. Do you want to talk about the challenges?
Well, the challenges that we face, you know, I think are dovetail off of what Mary was just talking about. One is the enormity of the issue that we're trying to address. It's not something that was created 10 years ago or 20 years ago. It's an issue that was created 400 years ago, and we're dealing with the legacy of that. And I don't need to talk about that further because I know everyone appreciates that. I think also, one of the concerns is that people, some people have, is simply frustration. You know, this is going to be slow progress without doubt, and for some folks, undramatic developments over a long period of time are, you know, not what they would hope for. They would hope for a dramatic turnaround, and we all know that that's not possible either. But again, we're confident that we've begun to make progress. We think that this past year, we've begun to establish a momentum. Seattle, King County, which is kind of the lodestar for all communities on this, it took them seven years really to get going, from what they told us, and here we are at just over three years and believe that we're making good progress. And again, as I said, that things are beginning to pick up. But I want to mention this, and I see we're at minus eight, which I assume means we're over eight minutes, and I don't know how much time we have. But I don't want the opportunity to pass without talking about what I said I would discuss earlier, and that is how we work with you, because I think this is really critical. I'm a planner in everything I've done in my life, in my business life, and in the organizations I've been involved in. And I suspect many of you are planners too. If it's nothing more than planning a campaign to be on the city council, or planning anything that you do, we have a plan. And you have a plan. I asked Patrick about it recently, and he provided me with the plan that you're in the process of developing. And I was curious to know whether we really fit into it in a way that we can support clearly what you are doing, because you appointed us to do this job, and it's important to me at least, that we're doing this in a way that's consistent with where the city is headed. So, I looked through the report, and I'm just going to spend a few minutes and talk about the fact that we are substantially aligned. What's in your report is substantially aligned with what we are doing and what we want to do. So, let me talk a little bit about that. First of all, on your strategic priorities page, you talk about outcome measures, and you say defining the change in lives of individuals, families, and communities that will be accomplished by implementing the strategic plan. And then you talk about tracking data. We are firm believers in tracking data, quantitative data, and that was the basis of our first report, making sure we have reliable data that tells us where we are at any time. And so, just as you sought data and seek data for your project, we do as well. And that tells us ultimately whether we're being successful or not successful. You then talk about a number of strategic priority areas in creating a roadmap for the future. And the first one of those is quality of life. And you talk about challenges we face, and number two on that is addressing housing affordability. Mary just talked about quality housing and making sure that we have housing that meets the needs of our community. The plan, and I know it's only a draft plan at this point, but it talks about, and I'm quoting, "Provide more equitable mobility access and reduce historic gaps." Equity is in our very name, and that's what we do. "Providing housing options that support all Peoria community members." Again, that's our quality housing. "Improve the desirability of our neighborhoods. Work with community partners to encourage civic engagement, volunteerism, and participation. And continue to partner with local health providers to address the health of our community by focusing on social determinants of health." When I talked about Health and Human Services Committee and their health equity lens, that's exactly what this talks to. I don't know if you knew that when you were drafting this, or the staff knew when I was drafting it, but that's exactly one of the ways we're supporting you. Next is downtown development. You wouldn't think that we really play a role in that, but according to this, that we do, because it talks about attracting commercial and residential development. We, one of our goals is to create a community that is welcoming and open to people of all races and ethnicities. And by attracting those people and retaining those people, we attract commercial and residential development. Under community safety, challenges we face, enhancing overall safety and crime prevention measures throughout the city and investing in youth education activities and development. That's the epidemiological... That's the epidemiological approach to, to fighting child violence. That is it in a nutshell. So we're doing that. Commit to supporting programs focusing on individuals and families affected by violence to address the root causes. Again, exactly what we're addressing ourselves to. Next, collaborate with organizations and external agencies to support programming for youth and young adults at highest risk of being impacted or involved in violence. Again, this is the epidemiological approach that we're talking about. Increasing the recruitment and retention of employees with an emphasis on public safety and emphasis on increasing the number of people of color and women, again. Data-driven public safety response tied to national best practices and standards. I mentioned earlier that we do go out, we look at what other communities are doing, we communicate them on a regular basis. Infrastructure is the next strategic goal. Exploring transportation options to improve accessibility and amenities for all. That's what Mary was talking about. Respect to mobility also, that ties into our transportation pilot study. Investing in, and the next is investing and revitalizing in our neighborhoods. And then under that, too, expand broadband access to all areas of Peoria. This ties into Andre Allen's efforts at the county level to get the grant, which our infrastructure, excuse me, our information technology committee is working upon, to ensure that there is broadband access, as this says, to all areas of Peoria. And what we're talking about here, friends, is not quality, is not just access, but quality access. You could say to somebody, you've got access, that dirt road in front of you is really a nice, a nice access, whereas this family has an asphalt road in front of them. What we're talking about is access that is quality access to the broadband for all people. Next is business growth and prosperity. Supporting and developing our workforce. That is exactly what our transportation pilot is about. Fostering innovative partnerships to expand the supply of high-quality, affordable housing needs. Add and retain jobs and businesses in the city. Again, transportation study. Grow existing businesses. That ties into our efforts on the contracting options. And then the final strategic goal is embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this starts off by investing, invest in equity and address disparities by working with our community partners. That's part, that is the key to the goal we're doing. That's how we, again, help to support what the city council is doing, and what the city is doing through this plan. Develop a highly engaged, diverse, culturally responsive, and high-performing organizational workforce. Provide residents with equitable access to services and resources. Use equity to inform policymakers of potential gaps or negative outcomes. And increase the percentage of city spend with racially diverse business suppliers across all departments. Again, that's what we do. And I know that, that I've used the word equity several times, or many times tonight. When we were last here, the question was raised, well, what do we mean by equity? And the city defined it in our charter. It's to provide access and opportunities to all. That's, I assume, how this was being used in this report. That's how we define it too. So again, we are aligned with you and what you're doing. There is a identical alignment, not just a substantial alignment, but an identical alignment there in accomplishing, trying to accomplish what we're doing. So, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, all I want to say tonight is this. We are confident progress is being made. It's, it's slow, it's, but it's steady. It's aligned with what you want to accomplish, as I understand it, at least from the charter we were given and from the city plan. It's also aligned, as you might anticipate, with the county's plan as well. And, you know, with your help, my friends, we will continue to pursue this, and we will have success. And I, I, I trust that you appreciate that we are thankful for the confidence that you've placed in us. And we look forward to continuing to work with you to, to achieve great success in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Attorney, Attorney Burci, Ms. Peterson, also lovingly known as Tim and Mary. We thank you for your leadership in this work. It's critically important work. The disparities that are based on race are undeniable. I mean, your 2022 report outlined, you know, all the different disparities in eight different areas using data. So I know that your, your work is data, data-informed, that it now is seeking root cause solutions. And, you know, the fact that you've moved from just talking about the problems, identifying the problems, to now strategies towards solutions is huge. There has been progress from where you started three years ago. And this report, the 2023 report, really outlines some, some great strategies and activities that are working toward making Peoria a more racially friendly city, and beginning to close those gaps that are based on race. So again, I thank all the participants, all the volunteers who are part of this initiative. There's a lot of people involved in this work. There's a, a lot of areas. It's complex. It's not easy. Like you say, it's, change is not going to happen overnight, but we're taking steps, incremental steps toward solutions. So again, I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you both for your, your work in this. You all are the dynamic duo that has been leading the ship. Very detailed report. Definitely appreciate towards the end referencing the City of Peoria Strategic Plan. And I know you all have done the same exercise for the County of Peoria as well, too, because all of this work is aligned. And it's so important that we don't have those silos. So I appreciate you taking time to provide that alignment to us. I think it's also an illustration to our community. As many municipalities, organizations, communities have pulled back from this work recently, the city and the county of Peoria has doubled down. And we demonstrate that with our volunteers, the staff that are providing support to the various working groups. And so I think this is a great time to be a, a resident of the City of Peoria and the County of Peoria because of this commission. And as the council liaison, I would like to offer an invitation to my fellow colleagues around the horseshoe. You all heard the various working groups that are featured in our report. So many of us have various professional experiences and passions that we can all contribute to this work. So I would definitely just offer you the invitation to, to see a working group. And if you want to get involved, reach out to myself, or Tim, or Mary. We would definitely welcome your input and your suggestions as we look to move this for, this work forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Number Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was eagerly writing down notes. But let me first tell you that I am so proud of the work that you all have done. As an individual who was there in the beginning, and saw the slow, the slow start, and to see the progress that's been made. So although it may be slow progress, it's great progress. And I say it all the time, we cannot fix what we won't acknowledge. And what you've done is, A, you've acknowledged it, and then you've even created a plan of how do we begin to fix it? And so I thank you for that. I was, you, you answered it, Leader Tim, because I had all these notes of this fits into this strategic priority and this plan, you know, it does align. And it aligns beautifully. And that just speaks to the work that we could do collectively. And as we begin to do that and break down the silos, that's when we have the progress that we have. Again, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your work. Thank you for everyone involved. And again, I just applaud your efforts. And this is absolutely beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Graham?
Yeah, I appreciate this overview here. It's a slick piece. The only thing is, I have a couple of questions. First of all, everybody knows our city is exploding with gun violence. A lot of it involves juveniles. How are we coming along? And I don't care who answers this, as long as I get a direct answer, instead of someone dancing around it. How have we been doing with the implementation and the spending of money to combat this violence with our anti-violence initiative money? This council has appropriated hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to quell some of this violence. And hard policing's good, but sometimes we need to see some revolt, some, some results from our anti-violence initiative programs involving our community-based organizations, et cetera. So maybe somebody can answer where we are with wise use of these dollars, what kind of progress, progress we've been making on that.
And I don't think it's fair for Tim and Mary to actually answer that question. I think that that's a question that can, can come from our staff or police leadership, more specifically as it relates to city dollars toward programming for violence prevention.
Well, then I have a follow-up question. Okay? Because, you know, I'm just not going to sit here and listen to this and not ask questions. I'm not going to. It's slick, it's nice, but I want to know what kind of progress we're making now. What was brought up by our co-chairs, whom I respect highly, was the CO2 pipeline. I'm not so sure that's dead. Manager, corporate council, do you have an update for us, since you don't want me to ask them any questions, or you think it might be inappropriate? Perhaps our administration can answer that.
So the, the state has advanced some legislation that is on the governor's desk, trying to deal with the issue of the CO2 pipeline, looking at saying that there will be no pipelines coming in until some of the regulations come out at the federal level, including some safety requirements within that. I do know that the legal department is writing up a summary of that legislation to get that to all of you, so that you'll be able to see the, kind of our assessment of what that legislation looks like. So that's been undertaken. And I do know that representatives from our local community that are involved, not only in the RJE, were involved in some of the lobbying activities on that legislation down in Springfield as well.
So our, our co-chairs and members of the commission, and some of the members of this council who are very strident about it, were correct in saying we needed a more intelligent regulatory architecture before we go putting CO2 pipelines in 61605 or anywhere near the city of Peoria.
Correct.
And, you know, we were reviled when we said that at first. Oh, my. We just should roll over and play dead, and let these pipelines come in, because we were going to be taking away all these jobs from people. And I would remind the council that even if that pipeline is built many miles away from the city of Peoria, the first responder will be what, manager?
It'll likely be the Peoria Fire Department.
It would likely be the Peoria Fire Department. Why? Because we have a wonderful Cadillac Fire Department and a tremendous hazardous material unit. So this is a big deal for the entire city and all of our people. It's a big deal regionally. And so we were right to say, Councilman Jackson, and I know you were instrumental in this as well, no, we need better regulatory architecture. So I think we've made good progress there, and I thank you for your, your efforts there. I know you have worked on this. And so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too, I do echo the sentiment in all of the work, the groundwork that you have laid in, in putting a, a plan like this and a strategy, a strategy in place. I was particularly intrigued with one of the recommendations on page 24, talking about creating employer-operated or supported transportation programs. That's a wonderful suggestion. My concern is, I, this is wonderful. I'd like to be more actively involved in the focus groups. And I'm also concerned about how we can raise awareness, market this, this, this plan to the point to where we can engage our, our businesses, our intergovernmental agencies that are responsible for creating this inclusivity that we so desperately need in so many areas. But I, I would like to find out how we could get those partners, and I'm, and there, there are many of them, employers and intergovernmental agencies to embrace the hard work that you have done. Because the question had come up just a few months ago about how long the group would last. And, and we don't want this hard work that you have done, this research, to just disappear in five years, 10 years, 15 years. And I, I would love to figure out how we can get our community collectively to engage in these strategies. I'm talking about employers, and I don't want to name any specifically, but we know there are many that have areas, that have departments where we don't see these policies. And, and this problem has, this problem wasn't created overnight, just like crime wasn't created overnight. But I would like to applaud you and encourage you to help us so that we can help others to embrace the hard work that you've done, and to try to encourage the people in our community who don't necessarily look like us to embrace it and to put forth those strategies so that this will sustain itself long after maybe Mayor Ali's not here, I'm not here. We've got to find a way so that it just doesn't, the hard work just does not disappear. So I, I, again, I'd like to applaud you, but I, I, you know, I encourage you to help us so that we can help market this to employers, to, we all live here. This is all our community. And we don't want the hard work to disappear after five or 10 years from now. And we're back to where we've been. So thank you once again. And I look forward to hearing more about how I can become engaged. And I certainly will do what I can to influence those people that I work with to embrace these strategies and see what we can do in terms of being intentional, in terms of, so that we can see the kind of results we hope to see. Not just next year, but this has to be a continual process. If we wanted to make Peoria the kind of all-American city that we profess it to be. So thank you, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Now, putting together a communication plan, and so that will include some of the various groups, bodies that you just mentioned, how we're going to market it to them and help understand that the return on investment, as we talk about Peoria and Peoria County, when we make it a warm and welcoming environment for all, and we provide, help provide the employment, the fund, the leisure, the quality housing in neighborhoods, when we provide that, they will come. And businesses will have their return on investments. So we're working on that. Thank you. And we'll be in touch.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to second what most have said here. I appreciate all the hard work, all the dedication. I truly do. And I'm going to vote for, to, to receive and file. But, but, when you brought in your annual report last year, I emphasized the fact that if we continue to treat symptoms without addressing causes, we're just going to continue to have the symptoms. The causes perhaps are unpopular, okay? But it is the causes that we need to go after. I think you've identified a few in here. But most of what, let me just read you, by the way, I got this a couple of weeks ago. I don't know, I thought everyone had it, but I did read it. Let me just read a sentence here. Decades of structural racism, from redlining and job discrimination to disparities in education, criminal justice, and beyond, have created our current situation. I agree with the first part of that sentence. I disagree with the second part. I agree with the first part of that sentence. I disagree with the second part. Disparities are symptoms. They do not create anything. They show us that there's a problem, but they don't create the situation. And if we go after those, we're missing, we're missing the point, in my opinion. I look at the progress of the black community in America through the 1920s, 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s. And most of that time, there were laws, there were Jim Crow laws. And in the North, there were practices or rules, which obviously Jim Crow laws discriminated, but so did so many of these rules, et cetera. Okay? However, the nation was changing, and in 64, we passed the Civil Rights Act, 65, the Voting Rights Act. All through that period of time, however, even with all those impediments, the black community was, was marching on and gaining further and further in, in income parity with the rest of the population. By 1960, and well, well before 1960, the rate of marriage in the black community was higher than the national average. Okay? The amount of unwed mothers was at a lower percentage than in the rest of the population. The number of children being raised in a two-parent family was, the percentage was higher than in the rest of the population. These were solid families. Crime was low, et cetera, et cetera. We passed a bunch of laws after that Voting Rights Act, and things started going south. Okay? One of the things that was attacked was the poor family, in particular, the black family. And by golly, that's been successful. We have really decimated the black family. If you look at youth violence in our nation, 85% of the youth that are incarcerated in this country are fatherless. This is a, this is something that needs to, we can't, we can't do it all here, but we can't ignore it either. And when we say that, well, you know, we've got, you know, educational outcomes aren't good, or, or there's too much poverty, or whatever, everyone agrees. But there's an implication here that it's because of racial discrimination. And I am not here to tell you there's no such thing, but I think it is not a real big deal in the general society. But there are some things that are real big deals in our society, and we ignore them. Now, on page five, once again, and Madam Mayor, this once again says they want to end racism in city and county government. I asked you last time this came up, if we have a racist city government, which you said we do, that bring us the information and we will address it. Okay? But, we haven't seen anything. I would just like to say, I think your work is very, very good. Very good, but it needs, I think, to go much, I don't know about much deeper, but it needs to be redirected a little bit toward causes, not toward symptoms. We have to, we have to address the symptoms. We have to address crime. We have to address poor housing. We have to address so many of those things.
Councilman, can you wrap up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have to address all those things. But to have anything, if we don't address the root causes, we're just going to keep fighting the same battles over and over again. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do want to thank both of you. I, I think you've come up with some good ideas. And I, I agree that, you know, this is, this is something that goes back centuries. It's not just slavery. It's, it's redlining. It's, it is job discrimination. Those are very real things that lasted well deep into the 20th century, and there still is job discrimination today. You just have to be kind of low-key about it. Let's not kid ourselves. But you, you do have, you do have very good, very good ideas here, and, you know, I, I do disagree with, with my colleague in that I, I do think, you know, something like pre-K education is, is a root cause. Because if a kid starts kindergarten behind, they're already behind. They already have to play catch-up. That's a big deal. You know, I, yes, there are single-parent households, but they can make it work if they have daycare. If, you know, being a single mother, raising a child, you need transportation. You, you need, you need daycare. Often, family is there to help, but it's not there for everybody. But thi- this is a slow process. I know, I know some people can be impatient with this, but I do see a lot of good ideas here, and I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind the council that the purpose of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice, Justice and Equity is to have the conversations, to find out what's really happening. And I'm going to lean on the edge of decorum. We don't get to tell people what their experience is. It's important for us to listen to the people so that we understand what's happening and understand that we're in a place of privilege. And take that data and make the necessary changes, incorporate what you're saying. And, and again, I don't want to discourage the work that's been, being done. There are volunteers that are not getting paid to do this work, that's going in, into the trenches, trying to find out why are things happening? Because we can identify it, but if we're not figuring out what all it is, we may think it's A, B, and C, but yeah, it is, but it's D, E, and F also. And so, I applaud your work, and then I want to go back to what my colleague, Councilmember Allen, said. We all have an opportunity to attend these meetings. And so, that's where, if you want to give an educational lesson, you go in those meetings and give those lessons because the, for all the hard work you guys have done, I think that is to be applauded. Yes, we can question, but we don't know what happened behind the scenes. So, again, encouraging you, go to the meetings. I've been to one. You've done great work. Want to continue to encourage you to do, continue to do great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, can I get a motion to receive and file?
I'd move to, like to move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Continued discussion. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Burci, Ms. Peterson, for, for your work on this. I remember clearly the presentation a year ago and how uncomfortable it was and how it really illuminated with facts and data some of the things that we've talked about at such a high level for so long. So, I'm really thankful for, for this new report, and I, I think it's so, laid out so clearly to see what you've done in 2023 and what the plan is for 2024. And hopefully, th- this work continues for, for years to come until hearing these annual reports gets a little less uncomfortable. I think that would be the goal for all of us. So, I commend the efforts and thank you for your diligence in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion to receive and file this great report, and I would ask everyone to please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 24-143 is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Counsel, and Director of Public Works with a request for the following. A, approve an amendment to the Landfill II Agreement with Waste Management, Inc., pending review and approval by the State's Attorney's Office. And B, adopt an ordinance admitting the city of Peoria 2024 biennial budget relating to the Solid Waste Fund for additional work from FOTH for multiple added services in the amount of $100,000. And Item B requires a two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting no less than six.
Did you want to comment before I go to Council, okay. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As one of the council liaisons to the Landfill Committee, I would just tell you, discussions continue in this regard, and we would ask for a 30-day deferral on item 24-143.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, last time this was up, I just wanted to bring this up. We're running up costs. This is costing us, these are damages that are recover, recoverable if we were to sue. I, I hope everyone's, you know, continuing to negotiate in good faith, and we're making progress on this. I'm not going to try to stop this now. I'll vote for it, but I really hope this doesn't keep happening. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Public Works Department is so extremely busy, and yet through all of this, with the many projects there, they have on their plate, they're constantly asking for public input. I'm happy to announce there's another opportunity for public input this Thursday at 5:30 at Woodruff Career and Technical Training School. This one will be in regards to the extension of the Rock Island Greenway, which will take it from the, where it currently ends around Park Avenue to the riverfront. So, if you're interested in seeing what, in conjunction with IDOT, we're proposing, please come out Thursday at 5:30 to Woodruff, and you'll have an opportunity to see it firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Councilmember Grayatt?
Thank you, Mayor Ali. As I make my way through the community, past few days, I've heard nothing but wonderful things about all the positive events that we had all over the city on the weekend. And I think it's a testament to how great our city is, that we have participation in these events and people appreciating the Drone Show, for example, with Parkalooza, the 43rd, I believe 43rd Annual Moss Bradley Sale. And the great thing about it was not only were our people involved in, in events like this, and I know I'm missing some, but we had members of our Police Department, Public Works, Community Development, Fire Department, all integrated into these events. And I think our community really appreciates that. I know I do, and I know, I, I know I, the entire city council does as well. But people say we don't have anything going on in Peoria. Yes, we do. And we got lucky again, no rain for the Moss Bradley Sale, except a few little sprinkles that didn't last. Chuck Collins called it right. He said it's not anything that would cancel anything out. So, Mother Nature didn't do us a disservice on Saturday. We did very well. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what my, my colleague, Councilmember Grabbs, has, has talked about. And I'm also just super, super excited at seeing all of the infrastructure work going on everywhere around the city. And it's, 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 as much as there is, it's not an inconvenience. I've just kind of been encouraging people to be extra, extra careful. And I, every day, I drive around, and I, I'm just happy to see the progress that's taking place. So, thank you, city staff, for your hard work, and keep up the good work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Ditto. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
I believe we have another new business.
I'm sorry, I missed your light. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, was thinking about if I was going to bring this up, and I thought, you know, we talk about public safety quite often in organizations. I want to give a shout out to some individuals who put together the Manuel High School All-Class Reunion. It was, so, and I'll just give a couple of names because there was a lot of people, but I know Creston Coleman, Mark Porch, Todd Johnson. And, and I want to talk about this because it was beautiful. We had class of 1955 all the way to class of 2023. Just an amazing spectrum of people, and it was filled with so much love. And not only did these individuals do this and bring so many people together, but people flew into town, came back to Peoria, drove back to Peoria from across the country for this event. Now, if that's not driving the economic force, if that's not, you know, putting in that love equity, I don't know what is. So, again, shout out to them, and I had a great time as class of 1986. Thank you.
That was 10 years before you. All right. Madam Clerk?
We're on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, we have one, and that's Mr. Jeff Leroy.
Madam Mayor, city council, I've seen you folks twice before. This is the third time. Been working with code enforcement to try and get something done. We've got some stuff done, but it seems like this guy has got code enforcement by the throat. He, he stops them from doing things. He promises things. He waits till the day before that they're supposed to come back to get into the yard. He'll go back. He's still not picking up the dog feces in the backyard. He'll go out there and cut the grass and just chop it up the day before they come. And, and the smell coming from the house is still the same. And I talked to a gentleman with code enforcement, and I came down and met with him at City Hall. And there was a guy that came out, oh, probably like two, three months ago from, it was Right Way Tree Trimming. Because this guy's got a dead tree in his, excuse me, backyard, and he's got one that hangs over our property. And so, the guy came out, and the guy told me, he goes, this tree, the one hanging over our property, needs trimmed. It's grossly overgrown. And he goes, the other one needs to be cut out. So, he gave the gentleman in code enforcement the bid for it. And so, when the guy talked to the neighbor, he goes, no, that's totally out of the question. Well, I was promised by this guy from code enforcement that the, the trimming would go on with the tree, even if he wasn't going to pay for it, and a lien would be put against his property, you know, because the whole thing is about safety. And it's kind of like the eyesore of the neighborhood. The folks were talking about the neighborhoods. I mean, we got a big mix. We got a Hispanic family in the neighborhood. We have two Indian families in the neighborhood. We have three African-American neighbors in the neighborhood, and there's 10 white families in the neighborhood. And everybody's property looks nice, except for the one next door to me. And they came out, the city came out and made him clean out this little hut thing that he had on the side of his house. And they said, code enforcement wrote it up and said, hey, you have to get this and get it out. He said there was crushed soda cans in there. So, when he was hauling them out of there, there was 26 bags of it. And so, what's he doing? Instead of taking it and putting it back in the pickup truck and taking it down and doing it, he chucked it into the garage, the area that he won't let code enforcement get into. Well, those sugary cans attract bugs and rodents and everything. So, finally, yesterday, I did see him pulling it out, and he took it down and cashed them in. But he still won't let code enforcement in the garage, and, and something needs to be done with the tree. I mean, we've got a beautiful house. The house before us, we're the second owner. The first how, owner of the house was the city engineer for the city of Peoria for 29 years. It was Giebelhausen that was here from 50 to 79. And I mean, the house is perfect. And the rest of the neighborhood is perfect, except for him. And it's, it's the eyesore, and it's, it's just a constant problem. And I asked, I asked code enforcement how long because he had to sign the Because he had to sign the pest control contract. How long would it be that he had to sign that for? And he said he didn't know. Well, I'm going to assume a year, but what happens after a year? I mean, I've got pictures I took just before I came here tonight. The weeds are growing wild in the backyard again, growing over the fences. Some of you have seen it. Anybody that would like to, stop by the house, drive through the subdivision, you'll, you'll be able to figure it out. It's 2717 North Millbrook Drive, and I wish somebody would take a look at it and see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we'd be adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service. Good night.